Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call to order the special meeting for September 30th, 2021, for the city council. And I'd like to share also that this is a public comments on this special meeting. Our agenda items pursuant to government code section 54954.3A. The members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address any items described on the, and this agendas only, only these two agendas, no other agendas. At the same, at the time the matter is considered by the Oxford City Council. So Madam Clerk, roll call and posting of the agenda.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Madrigal.
Here.
Councilmember Parello.
Here.
Councilmember Tehran.
Here.
Councilmember McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you, and please join me to salute to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we have a moment of silence for the kid that was killed in a bicycle?
Go ahead. This moment of silence, go ahead for who for?
The young man that was bicycle accident.
Bicycle accident, okay. Moment of silence. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may announce that Councilmember Basua has also joined the meeting.
Thank you.
Also like to make an announcement about the posting of the agenda. The agenda for this meeting was posted in the city hall bulletin board on September 27, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So our next item is a public hearing, September 30th, 2021, city council, item B1, redistricting of city council districts. This is a time and place to set for a public hearing, an item B1 of the city attorney. Subject: Public hearing regarding redistricting of the city council districts. The recommendation that the city council conduct a public hearing. Two, one, receive a report on redistricting process for the city council districts, and the criteria to be considered in revising district boundaries. Two, receive a report on the final adjusted census numbers of each existing city council districts. And three, receive a presentation regarding the public mapping tool for drawing city council district maps. And we start off with the city clerk's certification of publication in any written communication, if any. Madam Clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, there was a legal notice for this public hearing, published in the Ventura County Viva newspaper on September 16th and September 23rd, 2021. And this, and also on the city's website on September 25th, 2021. The city clerk's office has received written communication on this item, which has been forwarded to council for their consideration.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And now the city attorney will now introduce a demographic consultant, who'll provide a presentation regarding this item. And following the presentation, will be available to answer any brief clarifying questions by council members that it may have before we take any public testimony on this item. And then council will have the opportunity to provide additional feedback after the public hearing has been closed. Is there any?
Go ahead. Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Ken Rozell with the city attorney's office. This evening, Kristen Parks of National Demographics will make a presentation regarding the redistricting matter. And afterwards will be available for questions.
Welcome, Kristen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I am going to share my screen so you can see a PowerPoint that I have put together. All right, here we go, that covers the redistricting process. And what we can expect now that we have the official final census data to work with. So as you all know, Oxnard has six council districts. These city council districts were adopted in 2018, and they were drawn using data from the previous census in 2010. Now that we are in 2021, we finally have data from the 2020 census, which we are required by law to use to reconsider these boundaries every 10 years. So in our timeline, we did hold the first public hearings for redistricting, actually prior to the release of the census data, which was significantly delayed this year. We expected to receive data from the Census Bureau at the end of March 2021. But as you can see here, we did not receive that data until August 12, 2021. And then the state of California went through an additional process of adjusting the data that was released late September 20th in the evening, and then actually re-released on September 27th. So we have had a very busy week combing through the adjustments that the state of California has made to that data. But the good news is, is that we have everything we need now to look at official numbers for redistricting. This means that we're well positioned to open up this process to the public for them to participate either by submitting maps or making public comment attesting to their communities of interest that they would like to be considered in this process. There are five public hearings in total that have been scheduled. And ultimately, the council must adopt a new district map by April 17th of 2022. Of course, the reason for that is to be ready for the November 2022 election. So this is our timeline. And I know you've heard this previously, but I am going to review the legal requirements for redistricting because it is a different process than the districting process that the city went through a few years ago. Redistricting, first and foremost, is governed by federal law, which is supreme. And the first thing federal law says is that each district must be relatively equal in population size. Federal law also gives us the Federal Voting Rights Act, which says that when drawing district boundaries, we must take care to not dilute the voting power of any protected class of voters. So for this reason, we look at voting age citizen data by race and ethnicity so that we can see information about voters. However, we have to avoid racial gerrymandering, which is defined as drawing district boundaries predominantly looking at race or only looking at race. It should never be the predominant or sole feature or characteristic we look at. For that reason, I'll be showing you additional demographic data. And we have even more extensive data from the census available to map across the city. So California law is also brand new. And what it is, is the Fair Maps Act, which has given every city in California going through this process, a rank ordered list of criteria. And we have to consider these criteria in this order as we look at the district boundaries. So first is to ensure that our districts are contiguous, which simply means that each district should be one whole piece. Every part of it connected, no disconnected pieces separate. The second criterion is to minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. The intention here is to ensure that neighborhoods and communities have a fair chance to be represented on the city council by being kept whole within a single district and not being split and divided if that neighborhood or community still wishes to be intact. The third criterion is to create easily identifiable boundaries for the districts, which is easily accomplished by having our boundary lines follow roads or waterways or other easily identifiable features. And finally, California law says our districts should be compact. While there are many ways that academics measure compactness, it is defined in state law as districts that are drawn so that they do not bypass a nearby area of population to take in a farther away area of population. So as you can imagine, when you do things like that and you get districts that aren't compact, they often have very funny looking shapes. And so that is something that is on this list, however, it is last. And finally, the state says we cannot discriminate or favor political parties. So we're not even going to look at voter registration by party or any of that kind of thing because it doesn't play in, in this process. Certainly, the city of Oxnard may have other goals that are either unique to the city or other things that folks bring to the table that they want to talk about as we consider district boundaries. And the reason I have number three other goals here is just to remind everyone that we can consider other things. However, only after we have addressed federal and state law to ensure our compliance. So that's a lot, but it is important, I think, for the public for full transparency to know exactly what's governing this process. And as we start looking at maps in the future, we will be referring back to these laws. So here is our demographic summary. It is a lot on one slide, and there's even more than this. But let me point out what's important here. After the state adjusted Oxnard's population, we have a total 2020 population number of 202,614. That number gives us a ideal district size because we take that number, the total population, divided by the number of districts, and we get 33,769 people, more or less. And that is sort of our magic number when we are looking at the districts and their demographic analysis. We want to try to aim for close to that ideal district size number when drawing our districts. So what you see here is by district, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, you see not only the total population of that district in 2020 per the final redistricting data. On the column below, you see how far off is that number from the ideal 33,769? So, and then below that, you see a percent deviation. So to what percentage is the district deviating from that ideal number? And the negative numbers that you see here indicate that that district is smaller than the ideal size. So the negative numbers indicate that perhaps we will be adding population to those districts. And likewise, the districts with positive numbers for deviation and percentage deviation are overpopulated relative to the ideal. So those are districts that will potentially be losing some population to get closer to the ideal size. Now, why do we care about all of this? Well, the reason that we do is, as I just mentioned, federal law says that our districts should be equal in population size, more or less, right? There is wiggle room. And what we're looking at is, in terms of that wiggle room, we are aiming for a total deviation under 10%. So what you see here in red is the total deviation. What that number means is, if you take the population of the largest district and subtract the population of the smallest district, you're going to get a number, and then that number is divided by the ideal district size, and then you get a total deviation percentage. So that's where that number is coming from. If anyone wants to do that math and see where it's coming from. It currently looks like in 2020 that there is a population imbalance for Oxnard. This is completely normal as 10 years have passed. Since, not since the lines were drawn before, but since the data used to draw the line was collected. Now, we often get questions at NBC about the census numbers. Do we have to use them? Are they totally accurate, et cetera? And I do want to let you know that we do have to use these numbers, regardless of whether or not you feel that they are completely accurate for your city. And I do want to mention that there is, and we don't know the full information yet, but we are seeing some areas having lower population than expected, particularly in heavily Latino areas. We don't yet know exactly what that might mean, but we do have to work with the data that we're given, and this is required by state law. So all of this demographic information and more can be shown and presented to you on city maps. So you can see geographically what the demographics are, not just at this district level, but down at the neighborhood and community level. So that is something that NBC will be preparing for you. And when we are inviting the public to participate in this process, one of the things that we're asking them is to think at that, at that smaller level, right? Not just the district level, but to think about their neighborhoods and communities. And so we're inviting the public to bring comment and testimony about their neighborhoods and their communities of interest and where those boundaries are relative to the district lines. And if those neighborhoods or communities wish to be kept within a single council district so that they have one council member representing that. Most people are familiar with what a neighborhood is. However, the term communities of interest or community of interest that's used in redistricting is not a commonly understood term. It's defined for us in state law as a population that shares social and economic interests and wants to be included within a single district so it has a chance to be effectively represented. So when we talk about what's your community of interest or we want to hear from the public about communities of interest, what we're talking about is a geographic area that can be subjectively defined by the people who are in that area that have common interests. And oftentimes, those common interests are common experiences, common problems or concerns that they might bring to city council to address. Or even things like having a similar language that is spoken or a similar experience with living around a certain park or school or having certain concerns about traffic or what, you know, it's very subjective. So one of the things I like to tell the public is, there's no wrong, there's no wrong way to define your community as long as you can tell us what brings you together and where in Oxnard you're located so that we can take that testimony and consider it when we are looking at the district boundaries. A good way to think about a district is, a district is simply a collection of neighborhoods and communities that are grouped together within one district. So we want to figure out which neighborhoods and communities should be grouped together in each district. Other things you could think about, right? Of course, our zoning general plan. Again, this is very open and NBC is happy to provide a lot of the data mapped on maps to help identify these communities. But I do not want to suggest or tell anyone in Oxnard what their community is, right? That is what you all have expertise in. And ultimately, we will be inviting the public to then, if they wish to go beyond just making that comment and testimony about their communities of interest, their priorities for district boundaries. We want to invite them also to use mapping tools if they wish to actually draw district maps. So there are some wonderful tools available that we are currently working to get loaded with that official data, right? Unfortunately, we had to wait so long for that data. But we do want to make sure that when we give the public these tools, that we're giving them tools that are accurate that they can use to draw population balance maps for the city. So there is an online mapping tool that will be made available. We also have tutorial videos and some step-by-step instructions for how to use the online tool. However, we recognize that not every member of the public has the time, the interest, or even the internet or computer access or savvy to use those tools. So we also will be creating for Oxnard, as you see here from 2018, paper maps that can be printed and made available or downloaded. And you can draw them at home to draw your district maps. So these are the tools that we are going to make available, really to empower the public to drive this process as much as they are engaged and interested to do so. So with that, I will close by reminding any members of the public that we do want to hear from you. And I am here also to take questions from the council members and do my best to help you understand the process and what we're doing along the way. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Parks. Excellent presentation. And I think we have council member Bert Parello has his hand up. Got a question?
Thank you very much. Three questions right off the bat. You mentioned one of the, one of the slides, public hearings. We have the date set. Is there an indication of where the public hearing is going to be?
Yeah, so that depends on the city. A lot of our cities are, as you are, having the virtual option available. But that is, you know, as that changes. And if there is a desire to have public hearings, you know, open to the public in the chambers, then that, that's an option as well. So that's, you'll have to remind me, I mean, you all look like, some of you are, are at home. I don't know if anyone's in the chambers.
Second question, you mentioned, quote, protective class under one of the protection, I believe, federal. Give me a definition of protective class.
Yes, absolutely. So the protective classes that we're talking about are the Hispanic voters, African-American voters, Asian-American voters, American, Indian, Pacific Islander. You know, I'm kind of, hold on, I don't want to tell you anything wrong here. Doug's laughing at me.
You nailed it, that's.
Oh, you're laughing at me.
There's a list there.
Yeah, so there is, there is a list available.
I think it would be wise to put that on the, on our site along with this, along with the comment to definition of what you meant. Race is never a dominant factor.
Absolutely.
Because it sounds a little contradictory, the protective class and race is never a dominant factor. Those are my questions, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Parks. I have, the question I have is 2002, excuse me, 202,614. Is that the final count?
Correct.
I always thought that we were probably about 208,000, but, but that's what the number, so. You said, but potentially in some areas we had an undercount. Was that in the, in the South Oxford area? Potentially.
Potentially, I mean, across the city of Oxnard.
Across the city, okay.
We don't actually know that because that's not what we're here to do, right? We're not here to identify where the undercount is. We're here to use the data that we have to draw the best districts that we can for Oxnard. But it is something to be aware of if certainly you expected to see different, like you said, more growth, right? And we're seeing, and I just want you to know, your situation is not unique. We are seeing that in other cities as well, that the projected population numbers were higher than what we actually are getting from the census.
Okay, well, thank you so much. So anyway, and then, of course, residents are going to be able to help us with the mapping of the, of the districts. And, and I was looking at the, what do we have? I think district number two is the one that's off. By what's the percentage on that, Ken?
It's 15.89% above, it's the deviation above the ideal.
15%, so that we're going to have to work on then.
That is correct.
Okay, we have councilman Tehran.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Parks, for the presentation. In regards to the mapping process, I want to thank the consultants. I want to thank NBC for creating the ability and opportunity for folks to use paper if they prefer to do so. For folks who would like to access it online, do we know where they'll be able to access that? And then an approximate timeline or time window when they'll be able to see that available?
Absolutely. So the MapTitude software is, can be linked directly from, from the city's website. And what that will do will take them to another website where they do create an account to log in, then they can use that to directly submit the maps. We work with an outside vendor, so a software company that's actually, you know, doing that. So NBC doesn't have control over exactly the timeline. So I don't want to give you a date, but we are working with them. As I mentioned, just this week, we got that data. So we are hoping that within, you know, two to three weeks, that all of that will be updated so that we can launch, launch these tools as soon as possible because we want to give the public as much time as they can get to interact with these tools. Keeping in mind that there will be sort of multiple opportunities for the public to submit maps. There'll be one deadline, and then there'll be another deadline as this process will be moving into 2022.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it. And I fully anticipate that our city communications staff will be fully preparing and announcing when that's ready to go. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Tehran, I'll add that there is a dedicated webpage, oxon.org/redistricting. So that's where all of the, the mapping tool, there's currently an FAQ and all of the documents that have been publicly presented available right now.
Thank you, Mr. Zaragoza.
Okay. If we have no other questions, then I would like to share this information. And now I'm going to open the public portion of the hearing. Members of the public are invited to sign up to speak on this item on the city website. Anyone who signed up before the deadline has three minutes to speak on this item. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Okay, so notice that we have five public speakers. And I'm going to call the speakers from the list, and then, then we'll go from there. So we have, I'm going to call the first two speakers. And the first one is Lawrence Paul Stein, followed by Douglas Partello. Lawrence Stein, three minutes.
Mayor, Mr. Stein has not called in at the moment. However, we do have Debbie Mitchell on the line.
Okay, how about Douglas Partello? Because he was next in the list here.
He has not called in as of yet.
Okay, so we'll go ahead with Debbie Mitchell, excuse me.
Ms. Debbie Mitchell. You may unmute by pressing star six. Hi, Debbie.
Hello. Hi.
You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have, I have just really a couple of, a couple of issues here regarding the redistricting of city council districts. Trying to step back from politics and the council person behind the districts is a big ask. In our district number one, our council member has been very helpful in helping our community be aware of all Oxnard as a whole. By creating communities of interest, I would hope that we, the public, not take these boundaries of difference, but rather boundaries of voices to come together behind the whole of Oxnard. For my specific community, as a resident in the harbor and beach area, I feel that our needs are a complex balance of maintaining the area we live in and preserving and protecting the visitor-serving nature of our community for all of Oxnard and beyond. Our ability to do this is sometimes discounted as being seen as only the rich people at the beach. Yet our community is economically diverse. Also, most who live in this area are in support of and welcome the visitors to the beach and to the harbor. Our concerns on water quality and the harbor impacts all visiting the harbor and the beach areas, as well as our concerns on infrastructure and capital improvement projects. That said, I would recommend and hope that the public take interest in the county redistricting in the upcoming report on the agenda, as I would hope that we not divide communities of interest in Oxnard between county districts, and that we use the county redistricting to cross-check our city districts. And I, I, I will be making maps as soon as that data is available. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. Our next speaker is Barbara Mackey Ortiz, followed by Vanessa Valdez. Barbara Mackey Ortiz.
Barbara Mackey Ortiz, you may unmute by pressing star six. Hi, Barbara. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Zaragoza and councilmembers. My name is Barbara Mackey Ortiz, an Oxnard resident. And I kind of wanted to put things in perspective a little bit, because, you know, we just started these district elections in the in the city, just in, I think, 2018. And I think, you know, they've worked really well. We have better representation and more representatives has made our city stronger, more responsive. I think the council members are doing a good job working together as a council, and I think that their proximity to their own neighborhoods make them naturally more responsive and provide better perspective for the council and deliberation. So I think since we're new at this, people are learning little by little and becoming accustomed to the representation and the representative. For this reason, I would recommend that we try to keep the same district boundaries as much as possible, understanding that we need to balance our districts. You know, I think having six districts was a good decision, but this is still a work in progress. So I don't think we should mess with it too much or any more than we have to, except for one consideration that I think we should think about. What is the value, or is there any value? Having people in the same supervisor district and city council district. That's probably a question more for the next discussion, but I think there may be some serenity there that we may try to take advantage of in terms of building the building the strength of our electoral system in the, in the city. And that's basically it. I look forward to playing with the maps and seeing what we come up with.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for your input. Next speaker is Vanessa Valdez. Vanessa Valdez. Madam Clerk, do we have Vanessa on the line?
Sorry, Mayor, we do not have our next speaker. It's not available.
How about Mr. Stein and also Partello?
I'm sorry, they did not dial in. They are not on, they are not in our call-in room.
Okay, so the next question I might ask, do we have any other speakers?
No, Mayor, we do not have any additional speakers at this time.
Okay, so then I'm closing the public hearing. And council members, you have any questions or comments you'd like to share at this time?
We do have a handout by Councilmember Turan.
Okay, well, okay, Councilmember Turan.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just want to thank the consultants again for the presentation and thank all the staff time that has been put into this and that's continuing to go into it between now and the rest of this process. And I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that, but also please encourage members of the public who are watching this now or watch it as a recording, please look at this, look at the staff report, look at the information available. Staff is available. If there are questions, you can email them. And you can connect with them in a number of different ways, but please participate in this process and really look at what are some different ways that we can balance out the needs that we have in numerically for our districts, but also maintain representation for each of those districts and citywide. So that's my comments, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Mother Gunn.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, as always, you know, we would love a lot of public participation in this process. We did receive a lot of participation last time with maps. The winning map was actually presented by the public. It was not a city map just for everyone's information. And then, as a reminder with everything, you know, we went to districts for a reason. Yes, many will argue it was a threat of a lawsuit. But at the end of the day, we, as a city, did not fight the process of going into districts. So please, there is a big reason why we went into districts. And it was for proper representation, and that cannot be lost in this process. Because then it will be very easy for us to redo this whole process again. We need to keep that in mind as a council and all of us as residents of the city of Oxnard. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we have no other speakers, I'd just like to thank, you know, the Mrs. Parks for excellent presentation, and also our, our city attorneys, Steve and Ken and Mrs. Zaragoza. By following all the criteria and the priorities, you know, to make sure that district geographically contiguous, that we have the geographic integrity for the local neighborhoods, as was mentioned, and also the community interests in a manner that minimizes division and geographic integrity as the city is respected in a manner that minimizes this division. And of course, you know, the priorities in order that, that, that the redistricting process actually really favors. So I want to thank you. So in this item is to receive one more.
Mayor, we have a handout by Councilmember Pirello.
Okay, Councilman Pirello.
Thank you very much. I would just like to bring this to the, to the rest of the council. I've gotten a couple of texts that this is not available on TV. They have been able to find it on YouTube. If we have more public meetings, I need to make sure that these things are working, and if they're not, we let the public know ASAP what they need to find. I want to thank Councilmember Madrigal for his comments. When I first got on the council in June of 13, I pushed for districts, and there was no traction until Mr. Madrigal got on council. And there was still traction, but not enough. Lawsuit was instrumental, but Mr. Madrigal is 100% right. I supported him and he did too for district representation, representation of a community. I'm very grateful to the people that spoke in public tonight, the public speakers. I'm obviously grateful to the people that spoke for my district. And it has been very rewarding serving that district. I enjoy it. Look forward to seeing what the public is going to do. I need to, this was distasteful, but I need to repeat. District One was created, and I was told when it was going to be me, I was told it's all the rich guys. Well, it's not all the rich guys in District One. And I appreciate that speaker saying that, because facts are facts. And it is, I am surprised to see District One is the one closest to the population. But again, thank you, Mayor, and I really do. I compliment Mr. Madrigal, because I hope we get some presentations by the public in this. Last time, there was tremendous amount. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. I'd like to share that, no additional comments from council members. So the purpose of this public hearing was to receive a report and receive public input. No additional council action is required at this time. Thank you so much. So our next item. Let me get this over here. This is a city attorney. And the subject selection of a revised supervisory district map for requested adoption of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. And the recommendation that the city council consider select one of two recommended draft maps for the supervisory districts for the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. And also adopt a resolution, and I'll read the resolution. A resolution, the city council of the city of Oxnard requests that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Ventura adopt the attached district map based on the map's compliance with the required state law, including the map's preservation of geographic integrity of the city of Oxnard and incorporated cities within the County of Ventura, that the map's preservation of local neighborhoods and communities of interest within the city of Oxnard and throughout the County of Ventura, and the maps, the easily identifiable boundaries. If we don't do this today, then the the next item would be is to continue this item till October the 5th, 2021, to take a formal action at that time requesting that the Board of Supervisors adopt a specific supervisory map. And of course, I'd like to share that this is under measure M. This is a pre-recorded presentation. And we do have the, the Ashley Golden here, and we also can, Rozelle and Jason Zaragoza, and also Steve Fisher for any questions. So council members, any questions on this item? Councilman Pirello.
Just one, I forgot to say last time, I want to thank the City Attorney's Office, because the public has no idea what's involved, and neither did the council when it first happened. They are working like mad, ladies and gentlemen. I thank you, everybody, the City Attorney's Office for helping out here.
Okay, so I, what I have to start off with, I have some, some speakers that I'd like to call at this, at this time, and then we can go from there. So we have, the first speaker that we have is Renee Ayew, followed by Douglas Partello. Renee?
Renee?
Yes?
Yes, thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Zaragoza and councilmembers. My name is Renee Ayew, and I'm with the Harbor and Beach Community Alliance. We want to, we support the city's right to seek fair and equitable representation on the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. We agree this may be best achieved by minimizing the fractionalization of the city's communities and effectively keeping Oxnard residents within two county supervisor district versus three. No city in the county should be divided into three districts as Oxnard has been. It is also critical that redistricting results in the Channel Islands Harbor and Beach neighborhoods grouped within one single county supervisory district. This means geographically, keeping the neighborhoods within the boundaries of Fifth Street to the north and Victoria Avenue, including the Silver Strand area to the southeast and the Pacific Ocean on the west, in a single supervisory district as a community of common interests should be. Our neighborhoods have repeatedly proven we are a community of common shared interests, not only by location, but by our actions and united positions on major issues. We have acted on behalf of the cities in our concerns, participated in city and county meetings and workshops, lobbied and worked together on many community projects. We speak up not only us, but the residents of both Oxnard and Ventura County. It is also crucial that our harbor and beach communities are grouped in a district that understands coastal neighborhoods, values coastal resources, and works to protect them all for all to enjoy. We support redistricting that achieves fair and equitable representation on the Ventura County Board of Supervisors for both the city and the Channel Islands Harbor and Beach communities. We believe option one D, one D, does the best and ensures our right to proper and effective representation. So we will continue to support the city's right to seek fair and equitable representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Douglas Partello, followed by Lorraine Ephrass. Douglas Partello.
Mayor, Mr. Douglas Partello is not available.
Okay, then we have Lorraine Ephrass, followed by Debbie Mitchell.
Ms. Ephrass?
Yes, I am here.
Hi, thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor, Council, and fellow residents. I have scrutinized both these maps, one C and one D, and regret that I was unable to participate earlier on the Board of Supervisors with public input. I, I also regret that we only have two maps in contention at this time. And I do want to say that it was a very difficult thing to do, to enlarge them and lay them side to side with, fortunately, a map I got from INCO that actually had the various neighborhoods delineated. It would have been a lot easier if the maps that you were presenting tonight did have the neighborhood delineated. So I suggest that you make it easy on the fifth, if we have to go forward to the fifth by showing that. I do want to say that, with what Renee has said, and also with what Debbie said earlier, about keeping the harbor and beach communities together, including Silver Strand. And I do believe you've done that on both maps, C and D. However, it is not accurate to say that you have not, that you have succeeded in giving us only two supervisory districts, because Ormond Beach is being left out and was referred to in the presentation as an uninhabited area. But if you're familiar with Ormond, we, it is a much beloved part of Oxnard, and dozens and dozens of Oxnard persons, some of whom have passed, have given hundreds of thousands of hours to try to return Ormond Beach to its wetland state, to get rid of the superfund site next door, to make it into an educational resource. And it is going to be put into District Two. I think District Two will do a good job. It does create a third supervisor. So please let us not delude ourselves that we really have two. We have two for the larger inhabitants ports of Oxnard. I want to say about the beach and the harbor area. This has been an area that has been pushed out of Oxnard for as long as I can remember. There was one mayor several mayors ago who told me to my face after speaking to a branding consultant, that he had forgotten to tell the consultant that we were a coastal city. Oxnard is probably the only city in the entire country that doesn't make use of its coast. And in determining the many projects, I did note that the city manager put down at one time to exploit the coastal area, which has never been done. And it kind of breaks my heart that we're going to be put into district to a district that's contiguous with Ventura and looped together with Ventura. So perhaps we'll end up learning how to maximize the use of both the Oxnard and Ventura coastal areas and bring in El Rio as a major symbol of Oxnard, which is also being pushed out of the downtown, so to speak, area and put into District One, and that will get a nice Latino vibe on our coastal area. I really regret that we have to do this. I wish we could keep Oxnard as just one city, because the outskirts, Ormond, and our beach and harbor area are not really being considered with the central parts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Debbie Mitchell, followed by Barbara Mackey Ortiz. Debbie Mitchell.
Ms. Debbie Mitchell, you may unmute by pressing star six. Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, sorry. Hello.
Thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, City Council, and all of the consultants for the hard work on this. I strongly support option one D for two reasons. One, the harbor and beach community is kept together.
One, the harbor and beach community is kept together in one district. Two, this map appears to create a same split of the high density of Oxnard and corrects the division created by the last supervisory districts, which left a very important part of South Oxnard divided. So for that reason, and in support of HBCA, I do understand Lorraine's issues with Ormond Beach. But I would, I would hope that being that this is a part of Oxnard, that that third supervisory position for Ormond would give us three supervisors that are well aware of the valuable assets of our coastal community. So again, at this point, I strongly support option one D. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Mackey Ortiz?
Barbara? Barbara, you may unmute by pressing star six.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. You have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Zaragoza and council members. My name's Barbara Mackey Ortiz. And I'm speaking tonight as a longtime Oxnard resident. And one, I think the most important thing I got to say is slow down. I don't think it's a good idea for the City Council to make any decision on a map quite yet. There are a lot of considerations, and we need to make sure that we completely think things through. You know, with respect to the county, there are some legal considerations. Our county is over forty-three percent Latino. This population deserves two competitive districts. So how that is accomplished has not been figured out yet. But Oxnard should not complicate the process by selecting its district prematurely. Also, we need to think about the key areas and our neighbors that benefit from the fifth district representation, and also the areas where our city would benefit from being able to represent them. We want our supervisor to have some leverage on the board to make sure that our supervisor is not discounted as just the minority community's representative. How do we do that? I think we need to think that through. I will admit that the first map I drew included as much of Oxnard as possible that could possibly fit, working within the parameters of the law. But I am starting to rethink that a little bit. We have some time to figure this out. There is no need to rush to a decision tonight. Keep in mind that you are making a decision that will impact our community for the next ten years. Also, all districts have to be balanced. So we are playing a game of dominoes. It's not easy, and we need to really think it through. So please, slow down. Take a breath. Let's think this through and do our due diligence so we can come up with the best decision for Oxnard, both for today and for the next ten years. And I would say that with respect to Ormond Beach, I have to echo the comments of Lorraine. I think it's very important. And if it is uninhabited, or there's not very much population there, which there's not, I don't see why our district can't come down and cover that. I know our community has worked very, very hard on Ormond Beach. And it would be a shame if we couldn't have representation for Ormond Beach from our own supervisor. But in summary, I just want to urge you to slow things down a little bit, take a breath, and we really need to think this through. And I would ask you to, to continue the decision-making till I think they said in the report, October 5th. That gives a little bit of time to see what things we can do that will make sense for our community going forward for ten years and having a supervisory district that has some respect, power, and leverage on the Board of Supervisors as a whole. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, Barbara. That's our last speaker. I'd like to have Ken.
Mr. Mayor, can we just double check and make sure if Mr. Partello's on now?
Okay.
Just give him one more opportunity.
Partello in, on, excuse me?
Mayor? Mr. Partello did not call in. However, we do have Mr. Lawrence Stein on the line.
Okay, let's put him on for three minutes.
Mr. Stein, you may unmute by pressing star six.
Thank you very much, Madam Clark. I'm being disrespected again. My name wasn't called when you listened to people who speak, and now you bring me up at the last second. I asked for public documents on this, and particularly the census maps. The City Clerk refused to provide the census map to me, even though I submitted a public request for these maps. We have three supervisors representing portions of Oxnard. There's no reason why we can't have three supervisors again. There's chairmanning going on. Yes, there's one district that was entirely within Oxnard, and that was good for Oxnard. We also had two other districts that had representatives on the supervisory board. That's three supervisory boards out of five. That gives a lot more slot for representation. The previous speaker may mention the fact that you need to think things, think these things through. This is a decision that's going to affect us, as the previous speaker mentioned, for ten years. Ten years! You're going to be dead by then, Mr. Mayor, most likely because of your age. Many of us are concerned the fact that this is being rushed through. We have no way of knowing how much time we have to left on these items. But you won't, you won't give the public the maps to make these decisions or provide input. The City Clerk refuses to make these documents available to the public when we ask for them.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Just, Mr. Stein, I just want to share with you that my mother lived to be almost a hundred years old, so I got a couple of years to go. Thank you for that. But anyway, Ken, you know, the supervisory decision that we're making today is because the Board of Supervisors is going to be holding meetings soon and make decisions without our input. Is that, can you share a little bit about that?
Yes, absolutely. Under state law, the Board of Supervisors has to adopt their map on or before December 15th. By mid-October, the Board is going to start their deliberations to consider maps which are being drawn by their demographer, as well as by city residents and county residents. So it is important that the city provides its input as soon as possible. If I can address some of the issues which were raised, Mr. Stein raised issues about when documents were available. As was mentioned for the last public hearing, the state did not get its revised census documents available until September 27th. So just as soon as we got the documents available, we literally were uploading them and printing them out tonight, fifteen minutes before the City Council meeting started. So that information is there. As far as the district, the draft supervisory maps, those were reviewed and uploaded well in advance of the meeting, so they were available. Happy to address the other issue. There are a lot of different maps. We ask our demographer to draw a variety of maps so the City Council could carefully consider the options that are available. Just want to mention just one thing regarding the number of districts that are in options one C and one D. It is true that both maps have three districts, but only two of them are deemed inhabited. So Ormond Beach would be in another district, but is not considered inhabited. The reason why that could not be included within District Five is that it would block off Port Wainimi. So no other supervisor could represent Port Wainimi, and that would make a substantial imbalance.
The contiguous, right?
Yes, they have to be contiguous, and so you can't jump over the water. So that is, it is required to have a beach access in order for Port Wainimi to be represented by another district. If the council was interested, I'm happy to go over some of the concerns that we had with the current map and the reasons why we selected to recommend one C and one D.
Just give us an information.
Okay, absolutely.
So, can I continue? Mayor Protem, you want a question before Ken?
I'll wait till he's done with his comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So as laid out in the presentation, there's five criteria that is to be considered in the adoption of a supervisory map. That includes that the districts are contiguous, that you look at the local neighborhoods of interest, that the geographic integrity of the cities is respected in a manner that minimizes the division, that the district boundaries are easily identifiable, and that they're geographically compact. Here are the concerns that, that we as staff have with the existing map, which of course is, will be changed based on the new census numbers. The current supervisory map doesn't preserve the geographic integrity of Oxnard. As the map is currently drawn, Oxnard is divided into three different districts. And if you could move to the closer, there we go, there we go. Okay, we don't have that one, okay? It's divided into three different districts, and each one of those districts is inhabited. Some neighborhoods of interest are divided. There's four neighborhoods that are split between District Three and District Five. And District Three includes three districts in South Oxnard that should be part of District Five based on the neighborhood, the community of interest. Also, two, based on anecdotal evidence and other information we've received, a number of the city's residents, including those in South Oxnard, are unclear who their supervisor is because of the splitting of the neighborhoods and having some districts in South Oxnard represented by a supervisor that's based in Camarillo. So in our approach, we looked through all the maps. We carefully looked. We made a lot of consideration of the ten maps which Doug Johnson of National Demographics drew. We wanted to consolidate the inhabited portions of Oxnard into no more than two districts. It would be ideal in a perfect world if we could have one supervisor, but based on the population of Oxnard, it is higher than the allowable population based on U.S. Supreme Court decisions. We also wanted to reunite some of the established neighborhoods in Oxnard that have been split by the last map. We also, as part of the redistricting, we didn't want to do damage to other cities in Ventura County by dividing them into multiple districts. Some of the maps that you will see, options three, three B, four, and four B, did create some different divisions throughout the city and the county. But all those maps divided other cities into multiple parts. The option three and three B divided Camarillo, I believe, into three different districts. And the four and four B divided Camarillo into two districts, and also split up Seamy Valley. So we also wanted to create district boundaries that are easily identifiable and understandable. So if you could go to map one C and one D, just so we can show the, let's go with, let's start with one D, if you could, please. One D is in David, please.
Mayor, if I can ask, when they get the map on there, can you please identify it's one C or one D? Because there's no label on the maps.
Okay, thank you.
So that's two B, if you could go to, to one D is in David, please.
Got three B there, just four.
Ken, I think they're flipping through the appendix of the extra maps. The one C and one D are up in the main part of the presentation.
Do you have a chance?
Okay.
Jason?
There it is.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So just wanted to bring this up as an example. When you look at the map, especially in South Oxnard, there are very set boundaries, so it's very clear where the boundaries are. It's not jig-jag. It's not dividing neighborhoods. So I think that's, that's an important factor that we're looking at. And both map one C and one D do what I think is a very good job of drawing those, those boundaries that are clear and understandable, and do not divide those neighborhoods. So staff can recommend either map one C or D, but these are based on our analysis, and we're happy to take any questions that the council may have regarding the maps or the other eight maps which our demographer prepared.
Okay, Councilman, Mayor Protem, and then Councilman Parello?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I spent the better part of the last couple of days looking at these, and especially at one D and one C today. I, for the local aspect of Oxnard, I prefer one D because I think it keeps the core of Oxnard more intact than one C does. Where I have heartache with both of these maps is that it has an effect on other supervisory districts. And I'll use District One as an example. It separates Ojai from Ventura. And there's a real strong sentiment in the West County, especially the Ventura-Ojai area, that they want to remain contiguous. And I talked to a lot of people, made a lot of phone calls over the last week. And I know that in District Five, there's also a loss of some of El Rio and Island Acres to the District Five supervisory position, and that I think there are going to be some concerns with that, with the District Five representative. So, and the reason I bring this up is we have worked very, very hard trying to develop a stronger working relationship with the Board of Supervisors where it comes to Channel Islands Harbor. And I think we've come a long way and developed a good positive relationship. And my fear is that if we turn around and take a vote on proposing a map that splits one or two supervisory districts from the way they are currently, that that might be a little antagonistic. I would hope that it wouldn't be, but you know, working relationships are working relationships, and we do need to work together and be dependent on those supervisors. I do agree with the concept of keeping Oxnard to two supervisors as opposed to three. And I think honestly, I'm at the Board of Supervisor level, there really is not an issue with that concept. I think they agree with that in theory. So I'm comfortable there, but I am not comfortable going on the record of telling District One or District Five supervisors of, we want to split some of your representation up. I think I would have liked to see some other options. And so because of that, I'm going to have an extremely difficult time supporting either one of these options tonight. In fact, it will likely be a no-support vote. And I bring that up because if, as a council, we're going to take an action for a resolution, I think it should be unanimous, and unfortunately, I don't think it will be unanimous. And that, that's not the good way to propose anything to the County of Ventura at this point. So my suggestion would be, if it's not going to be unanimous, and as I said, I don't think I'll be able to support this, so it probably won't be unanimous, that we as individual council members propose to the Board of Supervisors as an individual what we think should happen. And I know some cities, the City of Ojai, and I believe one other city has had their city manager write in on behalf of the council and say, here's what we've proposed for your district mapping exercise, and has kept the elected body out of taking a vote on a resolution. So I am, again, I appreciate all the staff's work. I know it's not an easy job, and it is a challenge because Oxnard is one quarter of this county's population, and they have to have five districts. So just simple logic will tell you that Oxnard has to have at least two supervisor districts in it. And I would prefer to have two as opposed to three. I think that that would not be a problem for all the supervisors, but it's just the unanticipated aspect of this that might create grief for them. And I'm just concerned about how hard we've worked to have a good, strong working relationship. And this might jeopardize it at that point. So I would rather take a step back, do this as individual council members, and maybe really rethink this at some later point in time. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Bert, let me share a couple of words here before I go over to you. First of all, I want to thank the Mayor Protem for showing what he did because we have such a good relationship now with the county, you know, with the the tax sharing agreement, with the different things we're doing at the harbor, with the hotel, and and we have a lot of and we have a lot of good things coming out of the county and the city. But being there in the city council, and I was there for ten years ago, I can tell you that, to me, this is only a recommendation, it's really, we can share this information, doesn't mean they're going to do it. But once they get into into a dialogue, once they get into into discussions, this whole thing might be different than than anything else. I just want to assure that, you know, only as a perspective, only as a person that's been there before. But to me, this is only a recommendation that potentially could help, you know, the the Fifth District become to a two-supervisory district. And I respect you for that, Mayor Protem, but I wanted to share that with you, that they're going to do whatever they believe is to their own benefit. And to, I believe that this is basically only a recommendation from the city of Oxnard for the residents, and to have a say-so in in the redistricting of the supervisor districts. By the way, I think if it's still the same, within a few hundred or maybe a couple of thousand people, I think its district is about one hundred sixty-eight thousand. And the difference between Two Oh Two and and what we have is about thirty-some thousand more residents in Oxnard than 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 to make it a complete district. I just wanted to share that with you. Councilman Pirello.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think the Mayor Protem, the longest-serving member on this council, gave some very wise advice. I do favor one of the specific maps, but I do see that if it's not going to be unanimous, I would not advise going with a split vote and a recommendation, we go in weak, like a dog minus two legs. And I don't think that's a good move for us. The issue that I have with respect to the maps is a question. If we were to lobby for a map, a specific number of the maps, does the county have the same number map? Or do we, how do we lobby for that map on the county level? That's a question. But I do agree, and I wish memory was better, but I know it's at least a dozen, I believe, it's at least a decade, possibly longer, the agreement between the county and the city in the harbor was out of action. It's taken a long time to get that. And humans, being blessed with all the the good and the bad, grudges can be carried for a long time, and the advice of the Mayor Protem, I think, is wise. People have long memories, and payback is payback. So I don't think it would be wise to upset everybody. There's a lot of people that want things here, including myself. I think that, you know, I remember going back to the one that I was aware of, was John Flynn, one of the strongest supervisors I ever met. He got a lot of things done, ruffled some feathers, made some entries, but he got a lot of things done for his district. The, but the things have changed. And I live in Supervisory District One, and it was a rocky start to my relationship of getting involved in in my neighborhood with Supervisory District One, it worked out. We have Supervisory District One representing areas where there's levees, and there's issues, and it's worked out, and they, and all of the supervisors chipped in. Mayor, the current mayor, John Zaragoza, on the Board of Supervisors, we all chipped in. But I, I I think that the wisest advice, if the if the Mayor Protem were to make that in a motion, I would I would second that, that we don't take a position on this, because I think that we could reshoot ourselves, not in one foot, but both foot. That's my comments, thank you.
Thank you, and we have, I think it was Councilmember Madrigal, and then Basua. Or the other way around, Councilman Basua.
I think Councilmember Madrigal was before me, but, thank you. I want to thank staff for all their hard work on putting these maps together and the staff report. I actually was going to say a lot of what our Mayor Protem said. I, if I have to pick one map, if I had to, it would definitely be One D. I'm not really happy with Ormond Beach not being part of this district that we would be proposing, but I think that we're going to be making a decision that is going to be affecting a lot of people for a very long time. I know in the South and District Five, I have two different supervisors, and one is very active, the other one is not. I would like to ask our city manager, it was mentioned that Ojai wrote a letter with recommendations. I think maybe we can all agree that we want two supervisors for Oxnard, and that would be the best thing for Oxnard. I'm wondering if that wouldn't be a better approach. I would like to see two supervisors for Oxnard, but I'm not really sure that these maps are something that I that I'm going to agree on. So I'd like to know what other options we have besides a resolution from the city manager.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember. I think the the options were actually laid out quite well by the Mayor Protem. I think if if you can find consensus, this would be a great mechanism. If not, you all, as elected officials, I would highly encourage you to each advocate for something for on behalf of our city. Or you can ask me to send a a letter the way Ojai did, just making a request. In our case, it would be to keep to two supervisors.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I greatly appreciate that. I would like to make a motion not to approve any of these maps. If we need more time to think about it, I'd like to come back in the October meeting to discuss a little bit further. Otherwise, I would be okay with our city manager sending a letter on our behalf if we all agree that we would like to only keep two supervisors for Oxnard. And because, again, I don't think I can support either One C or One D as far as the maps are concerned. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. My understanding is that we had Mayor Protem make a motion, and also Pirello second it, but we still have a couple of council members that like to share some information. And no, Mayor Protem, you haven't made a motion?
No.
Okay.
I didn't, I did not second a motion. I I said, if the Mayor Protem would, I would second.
Okay, so then we we have a motion by Basua. Is there a second to what she shared? We still have Madrigal and also Councilman Lopez to share.
Mr. Mayor, I'm interested in hearing the other council members' comments, but I will second that motion.
Okay, then we'll we'll go ahead and go with Madrigal, and followed by Councilmember Lopez.
City Assistant City Manager Golden, I believe, wanted to speak, a letter speak before me.
Thank you, Councilmember, just one point on one of the items that Councilmember Basua raised in terms of the criteria. Both maps that were before you for recommendation, both One B, I'm sorry, One C and One D had four things in common. And they consolidated the inhabited portions of Oxnard into two districts. They reunited established city neighborhoods. They did not divide other cities within the county into more than one supervisory district, and they created district boundaries that are easily identifiable and understandable. I was curious, Councilmember Basua, if you were looking rather than a map, at certain criteria that was important to the council, that there could be a letter sent. That was the basis, and maybe there's consensus on those, that criteria, which is outlined, I believe, that's page three of the the staff report, right before it talks about Option One as a map. But just another item to consider as you're looking at the maps, if you're not interested in adopting a specific map, but discussing criteria, that there's a framework there for you to look at.
Because of this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, real quickly, I know, I'll just start where I was going to start before, even though I think it's irrelevant now, but I actually favored One C. I honestly, both maps I could live with, I still think that something better could have been done. But my biggest issue with it in general, though, was actually our neighbors to the west or south, depending on where you live, and that would be Portway-Nimi. I don't think it would have gone through even whichever one we would have recommended, simply because I think many would argue and probably went out the G-word, gerrymandering. I think when Eme would have been way out there with District Two, which is the Quinado Valley, which is Thousand Oaks, and whatever else, Newberry Park, Lake Sherwood, and the whole area. I think that would have been something wrong with both maps, and something that was kind of bothering me the entire time. As far as mapping goes, I know people in the community have reached out to me, people from the city of Oxnard, people from Ventura, people from the East County, and it's been an interesting exercise trying to map these out. I've seen many different maps already. I know everyone's main goal actually is actually to put Oxnard into two districts, and most of the maps have done that. There is a map out there that divides Oxnard into three again, but it's at about divides the city into thirds, pretty much even, but I know that of other participations out there. You know, I think, I don't think whatever we send out is a recommendation. Obviously, the board supervisors, it's their decision, so they could take it as serious or not serious as they want. But we do need to let our voice be heard as a city, even, you know, obviously, whichever map, or we're not even doing maps, but, you know, the ultimate goal of, you know, having two supervisors is crucial. So I agree with that, and hopefully, you know, we got something to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor, and definitely really appreciate this, having this dialogue and this conversation amongst us all. I think we all have a different perspective, different experiences. And, you know, we all agree that that we should have, you know, no more than two supervisors, not by choice, but based on on the guidelines and following, following the what the law is. So it's definitely given given me a lot more to to think about, and I I do appreciate the work that has been put forth by our staff. I mean, this is a lot of data, a lot of numbers to consider, and all the the guidelines that need to be met in in drawing these maps. So I, I, I have no problem with the two maps that were recommended by staff, either One C or One D. I think there's there's arguments and points in going either way. My position with this, first and foremost, is as a representative, one of one of seven representatives for the city of Oxnard, is that I need to advocate for for residents of Oxnard, for the city that that I represent. And so i- in looking at that, you know, who are we, who are we serving? Who do we need to ensure is being represented? And and that's what leads me to really encourage everyone else for us to take a position, actively take a position on the recommendation of either map. Because if it's, if it's my understanding, and and I definitely ask for any any correction, is that the last redistricting, the city did not take any position on it, and that is why we were negatively impacted, especially looking at the south end of Oxnard, as Councilmember Basua mentioned, having two different supervisors represent that do represent, causes some issues and misses the representation that we need on the county, on some critical issues, and reaching, bringing the services, and meeting the needs of our residents. So I I do hear what everyone is saying. I appreciate the the comments from from the public, from our residents, and and bringing that perspective even on Ormond Beach, which doesn't mean that we get rid of it as a city, it's still under under our city, there's still work that we can do. So I don't see that as a problem, especially having the city of Portway-Nimi as a partner and working alongside them to ensure that that we are moving our city forward, and really, again, going back to meeting the needs, bringing the resources to to our residents in Oxnard. So I I agree, and and see that we need to have a, it would be better to have a unanimous position as a council. But I really think that you have to take a position and stronger role in making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on what Oxnard needs, and and doing it in a strategic way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to try to help this along, because I can, first of all, by the way, I think this has been a great policy discussion. So let me, let me try to make some recommendations. And and I need our staff here to correct me if I'm wrong on the dates, but I believe that the county's first board hearing on this is on October nineteenth. And then I think they will have another one subsequent to that, before they they actually vote on a map. But I want to remind everyone that they will be entertaining many, many maps. And to to what Councilmember Madrigal said, there's, there are lots of interests in the community, probably from other cities as well as county staff themselves. So they're going to look at a lot of maps. So I think that we can, we can hold off on a particular decision if the council wants and needs more time. But also, we meet on October fifth and October nineteenth, and by the nineteenth, the county will have published at least the initial maps that they're reviewing. So you'll see what they're going to choose among. And and if we're not prepared to send over our city's position, whether it's by letter or or a map or or not, there's still a little bit more time. I think staff, and this is, I take responsibility for this, we were trying to be, we were being optimistic in hoping that we could stake out the city's position for the County Board of Supervisors to be aware of. Again, as I'm seeing other cities making their interests heard formally. But if this count, if there's, if our body needs more time, there is a little bit more time. So I just want to put that out there as several options for you to consider tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I, I think we're not going to have a unanimous vote on this item, but I was prepared to make a motion to approve One D, because I think that One D would, but it really would have helped us, you know, it potentially can help us, you know, with the two supervisory districts. And I remember when I was in the Board of Supervisors, I had a lot of concerns about the three supervisors representing the the city of Oxnard, you know, the the, I know the District One comes all the way down to Gonzalez, and in the east of Ventura Road, all the way to Pass, Oxnard Boulevard. Then the third district took over from PV down to Ormond Beach to Oneimi and up to Hemlock. So I was prepared to to hopefully submit a a motion to approve One D. However, I respect the city council members that that we're not going to have a unanimous vote. So consequently, I then will not share my my motion for for that reason. And of course, there was some ideas too, that potentially maybe the city manager might send a letter on behalf of all of us, you know, so that might be another idea. But that was my motion, but I'm not going to share that anymore.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a motion on the floor with a second.
Okay, that was Councilman Basua? Basua, and and the second was?
It was, it was me, but I think and Councilmember Pirello still have comments to make.
I understand, but we have Basua and second by you.
Yes.
Okay, Taran, and then Pirello.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Protem. I just was going to ask for clarification on the motion, because I feel like I heard that it was, it sounded like at first it was continue the item to the next meeting till October fifth. And then I also heard about either individually reaching out or having the city manager draft a letter with a preference. So I'm just wondering, are we going to, are we voting to do all of those things? Or I just want to get clarification on that.
We can potentially have our city attorney, you know, reiterate that motion, subject to, Pirello, do you have any other comments?
Yes, I'd like the city clerk to restate the motion, because I agree with Councilman Taran. It's not very clear what I'm going to be voting on, but I do want a clarification. I believe I heard one council member say- But I do want a clarification. I believe I heard one council member say something about cities would complain if Winemi was in a district. Isn't Winemi in District two right now?
It's not.
If I'm wrong, I'll admit it, but I think it is.
Yeah, it's under Camarillo, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you, but I I I won't vote on it until it's restated.
Okay, but um, go. Oscar.
If Winemi is with Camarillo, that means that's District three, not District two, District two in the Coronado Valley. For correction purposes and accuracy.
Okay, I, thank you, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Okay, so uh, Madam Clerk, um, do you want to repeat the motion?
Yes, I would like to ask for clarification on the motion because we had a lot of input.
We have a Ken, Ken has uh written down here, you want to.
Yes, if he could please read it for us.
Yes, um, and Councilwoman Basua, please correct me if I do not uh properly articulate this. Uh, it was to forward um, uh, a a letter uh to the the Board of Supervisors. Outlining four different factors that the uh. Oxnard City Council would like to see in the supervisory maps. These. The four items were to consolidate that inhabited portions of Oxnard into districts. Reunite established Oxnard neighborhoods. And do not invite other cities within the county into more than one supervisory district. And to create district boundaries that are easily identifiable and understandable by residents.
But, because I'm assuming that's your first and and Mayor Protem, that's your second.
That would be my second, but also it does not preclude individual council members from writing individual letters of support or non-support to the board.
That's a good point. Thank you. Okay, so we got a first and a second roll call. Oh, uh, excuse me, turn uh, Councilman Turan.
Yes, we have discussion on this. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to uh thank um, Mr. Rozell and uh. Uh, the city clerk for clarifying it. Thank you for making the motion, um, Councilwoman Basua. Uh. I also thought that I heard that we were con- considering continuing the item to October fifth as put in the recommendation. Was that not part of the motion originally?
I don't, I don't think so. No, no, that's not.
No, my my motion was to go ahead and allow our city manager to um forward a letter. Um, to the county supervisors and allow us to, like Mayor. Um, Protem said, to do it individually if we choose to um contact them. On our own.
No. Okay. Councilman Turan.
All right, thank you for that. Um, I appreciate that and um. I appreciate all the discussion that we've had thus far. I would um. You know, I know we're going to do roll call right now, depending on where we go with this. If this motion. Uh, were to not uh prevail, I would like to make a motion to continue this item to October fifth.
Um, based on the input. Right now, with the council members, we have a motion and a second, and we're going to take a roll call subject to Burt.
Yes, I'd like to ask Councilmember Basua, Councilmember Basua. Assistant City ma- Assistant City Attorney Ken Rozell read several points. When you made your motion, I did not hear those points. Did you mean to include those points?
Yes, during the discussion, um, Ashley Golden went ahead and also clarified that the. In in the council report, the those were the four items. I think we said could all agree. That those four items specifically, the ones that we want to keep Oxnard within two supervisors were extremely important to us. Um, and that's. And I also said that I couldn't agree with the maps because I also believe that Ormond Beach to stay with us. Um, so I said I couldn't support any of the maps.
Okay, and and the only rea- And the only reason I asked that question, Councilmember Basu, because I didn't hear you say that. And I want to make sure that that's what you want in your motion because it isn't Mr. Rozell or Ms. uh Golden making the motion. It's you. And Mr. McDonald's second, and we're going to vote on your motion. That's why I asked the question. Thank you.
And and I want to clarify that. I think based on what I. Heard and I would I still continue to hear and I heard what Councilmember Lopez said, that she would want us to go ahead and pick a map. Um, I think that at least what we can all agree on is that these four things are important. Specifically, the one to keep two. Supervisors within Oxnard. Um, the drawing, and and those are going to be just by comments. I'm going to just stop there.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, we have Councilman Lopez.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And uh, I. Uh, want to ask um Ms. Golden if she can, um, I I know the city manager asked for uh the dates of what the timeline is with the with the county. Um, because I, I do strongly feel that we should make a recommendation on a map and and. You know, clearly, we don't have a consensus on on any map today. Um, so, you know, I would like to see uh based on those dates. Um, and and make a friendly amendment to to what uh Councilmember Basua um has brought forward. Is if we could continue the item when we are in a better position to select a map. And if we can't come to a consensus, then 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 we, you know, then we forward a letter uh from the city manager.
But we have a time issue, is that?
May I? I I'm sorry, um, Mayor, may I ask a question? I mean, I I. I I'd like to ask Ms. Golden. If we table these item, item. Will the maps change or are these the final maps? Because if the maps are not going to change, it's not going to change my decision as far as me picking the map. But if this, but if staff's going to come back with different maps, that might persuade my decision.
If I may interject, um, I think the key thing about having more time is we will start to actually see. Of all the maps that the county sorts through, which ones they're actually going to consider, and that may inform our body. Uh, we may see a map there that that we can't, that you can support. Or if you, if you see the maps that they're considering that you really oppose, then you may want to consider. Sending one of the maps we have. So it's it's just playing for time in that sense.
Okay, so. Can. I restate, redo my motion with the the current motion stays, but adding after. The county meets and shows us their maps, we can come back. And maybe support a map that they have, that they're going to consider, but.
I might reward it something to the effect of if another map can be produced. That um does not create the concerns that we have at this point, that we would be willing to reconsider. Would that work?
That that would definitely work, thank you.
The question would be what, what time, uh, my apologies, because I think we have a. A a period of time that we have to make a decision and is that uh?
That that is correct. Uh, at this point in time, the the board is meeting next on October nineteenth and will start to consider maps. Uh, based on the schedule on the county's website, uh, there is indication that they are considering the adoption of the map. Uh, in early November, uh, and the deadline under state law for them to adopt a map is December fifteenth.
But look, we have a motion and and a second, but we have two more items before uh we vote. Uh, we had to run first and then Parello.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just as part of this discussion, I know we're hearing, uh, you know, possibly a. Another version of maps or additional maps will be drawn that we can consider that maybe um. Look favorably or something we can uh formally oppose that come from the county or submitted to the county. My question is, um, and I think it was uh touched on lightly already. Do we foresee any scenario where Ormond Beach remains uh part of one of the supervi- supervisory districts? Um, that would be one of the two that we're asking for. So I mean, it's. We want two districts um at the county level. But it seems that uh, if we have two, based on what I've seen so far, it would make it difficult to keep it contiguous with. Ormond Beach, but also still have Winemi be represented and still meet the numerical requirements of the each of the county districts. So I'm just asking that in a general sense, if that's difficult to answer at this point, that's an acceptable response as well, but I just wanted to ask that.
I think we can go. So Ken, go on. I'd be happy to dis- discuss that. Uh, as we mentioned early on, uh, our demographer drew ten different maps. Some of the maps, uh, option three, three B, four and four B would uh. Have Ormond Beach as part of one of the 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 districts. The issue, though, that that staff had with those maps is that it did multiple things, but in general, one, it would divide. The city basically in half and would split uh neighborhoods such as in South Oxnard between two districts. Secondly, and I I want to indicate that staff heard loud and clear. Uh, the issues of of how the map we're drawing would affect other jurisdictions. The maps that are option three, three B, four and four B would divide a number of other cities uh in the county. Um, the three B, three and three B series would divide Camaro into three different parts. And uh, map four and four B would divide Camaro into two and Simi Valley into two, so. Um, there are a lot of, every uh time you make one change, there is a domino effect with other ones, so. One reason staff supported one C and one D, yes, it put the city into two inhabited districts. But it also had minimal impact on other jurisdictions other than moving Ohio from uh District one to District three. It did not divide any other cities and it did not make any other kind of major changes, so we were looking for maps which would have. You know, the minimal amount of impact, but we also understand that that some members of the council uh believe that even those maps made too much changes.
And and potentially those maps could be acceptable. Otherwise, when you start separating the rest of the districts. Uh, I, it's not going to work, I just tell you that. Anyway, Councilman Parello.
Yes, uh, this this concept discussion is interesting, but the the detail is we have our next city council meeting on the nineteenth. The same day that the Board of Supervisors meets at eight thirty in the morning. So if they do come up with an with a map, we'd have to agendize it now with an unknown map for our council meeting on the nineteenth. Unless, and this is my point, on a detailed fact, is there an opportunity to get the maps? That the County Board of Supervisors is going to be discussing on the nineteenth, before the nineteenth, so we can have a special board meeting, like we're having tonight. To discuss what we want, what we want to do.
Can we agenda?
If that's not clear, I'll repeat it. Do this.
That that was clear. Let me try this. Um, so I I don't know how early uh the count, the county. Uh, publishes, but clearly they do publish before their meetings, so we can get those. We can agendize this if the council wishes for our council meeting on the nineteenth. Uh, they're not taking final action on the nineteenth. That's their first hearing before the board.
That's a good point, yeah.
So there is a little bit of time.
One other clarification, under the Brown Act, uh, the county would need to post their uh, their agenda three days in advance. So, in theory, the maps would be available seventy-two hours uh before that hearing on the on the morning of the nineteenth. So, uh, it's, they do not have a sunshine ordinance, so we we would not see them, you know, a week or twelve days in advance.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Basua. One more, I'm sorry. Councilman Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor, and I re- I get, really appreciate, this is, this is really great, um, with everyone. Uh, so just to to clarify, because I think the the what the what the motion was and and um. I if not, I would ask, uh, you know, what Councilmember Basua is is recommending is uh sending the letter. Um, but the addition was to continue this to the nineteenth. If, or or is that something that, you know, I can suggest uh amending to your motion so that we can consider? Um, on the nineteenth.
You did make an amendment.
I just want to make sure that's what Councilmember Basua was, okay.
So we can look at it, right? Yeah, correct.
Uh, I'm not, well, there's, there's some logistical issues. Uh, if we get the maps uh seventy-two hours before. Uh, our meeting on the nineteenth, our demographer will need to to look at them and staff will also need to review them, so it's a. Um, a very limited time period in which to do a a kind of detailed analysis. Uh, that would need to occur. It's it's possible, but uh, our demographer also is representing a number of other jurisdictions, so. The bandwidth uh may be limited as well.
Mr. Mayor, if.
My my friendly amendment was that to uh continue with the motion, but if the maps were significantly changed. It would be open for bringing it back to council uh honor before the nineteenth.
Yeah, that was my understanding too. Uh, we have a city manager. If if I can make a quick comment, I I don't think that it's one or the other. I think there's nothing wrong with sending a letter with our principles stated.
That's right.
Early, uh, as early as tomorrow morning, or I'm sorry, Monday.
Monday.
Um, and then review the mass, because again. Whether whether you as a body sends over one map or two maps or three maps, they will be reviewing many maps.
Exactly.
Right? So it, it, this isn't the dichotomy where they're going to choose our map or not.
They might not even look at it.
Right, so I think, I think we can do both. Um, so I think we can send the letter out, staying stating our. Your desires on those principles. And you can review whatever maps they're reviewing, once they refine it, and then you can discuss on the nineteenth here. If you like any of their maps, if you want to send one of our maps because you don't like any of their maps, or if you like one of their maps. And but you want to tweak it a little bit, I think there's, there is time for that.
Thank you. We're going to take roll call, the subject to the Councilman Turan's uh comments, last comments.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I I think it was um. I think I'm okay on it, but maybe I could just check in with Mr. Rozell and the city manager. Uh, if we were to push to the nineteenth, which it sounds like that's something we're about to vote on. Um, and the county's maps in theory would be. Um, published no sooner than seventy-two hours prior to the public meeting. Uh, but we agendize it and our sunshine ordinance says we have to get information out twelve days prior to our meeting. Um, do we run into any issues with that, or it sounds like it's just we would amend the agenda and include those maps whilst they're available?
That can, go ahead, can you? That would be a a classic subsequent need item that basically after the posting of the agenda, the item came up. In in this case, the maps would be made available uh uh for the city council to review, so we could agendize it and and amend the gen. To include the particular maps which were presented to the council, excuse me, to the Board of Supervisors.
Great, thank you.
And that's because that information would not be produced by us, but coming from another governmental body.
Councilman Parello.
Yes, uh, I don't like voting on things I don't totally understand. Can you please restate this before we have more discussion? For last time, please, and I appreciate the city attorney helping us the way he is here.
Let's go, go ahead and repeat that.
Yes, the the motion is to direct the city manager to send a letter to the Board of Supervisors. Outlining the four principles, um, which the 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 Oxnard City Council wishes to see in the. Uh, supervisory um redistricting. These are as follows, that the inhabited areas of Oxnard would be consolidated into two districts. Uh, they would reunite, establish Oxnard neighborhood. Do not divide other cities in the county into more than one supervisory district. And four, create district boundaries that are easily identifiable and understandable by residents. And then as a separate. Uh, item, uh, are part of that motion, allow the city council members to contact the Board of Supervisors. Um, directly to give their input on the particular map uh in which they support. And there was also, if I could get clarification as well, um, to bring this back um on October nineteenth. To uh review maps which are presented, which would be presented to the Board of Supervisor on October nineteenth.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Basua, you're okay with it? We're first.
I just want to clarify this with uh Mayor Protemp McDonald, because the motion was to only bring it back. If the maps are significantly, significantly different, um, but if we want to, Mayor, Mayor Protem.
Well, the term significant is a kind of a subjective term. What's significant to me may not be significant to others, so. For the sake of simplicity, I would say if if there are new maps to look at, let's let's take, take the opportunity to look at them.
Good point, so so that's a second then.
That's it, okay.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Saragosa.
Yes.
Mayor Protemp McDonald.
Yes.
Councilmember Parello.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Madrigal.
Aye.
Councilmember Basua.
Yes.
Councilmember Turan.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes seven two zero.
Thank you. And it's quite a discussion. Again, I, I want to thank the speakers that spoke today in this item and. Ken Rozell for doing a great job, Jason Zaragoza, Ashley. Steve Fisher, Alex and, and all the staff that worked on this. It's a tremendous amount of work that, and good discussion too, so. With that, we'll adjourn. Thank you all. Thank you.